All right, please stand. Join Councilwoman Gibbs in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father.
Loving God of heaven and earth, we come committing this meeting to you for your blessing. Help us as we are gathered together here. We pray for wisdom in the matters at hand. Please clearly guide us how to conduct the work before us with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to be the best we can be. Thank you that you are always here and that you provide for and sustain your people. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to call it a order, the City of Guthrie Regular Meeting, August 19th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Item number two, we have public comments, community announcements, and recognitions. I don't have anything unless...
Yep.
Okay, we have none. Item number three is the consent agenda, items A through D. Everyone had a chance to look at that. Any questions, concerns on the consent agenda?
I'll move a revolting consent agenda.
Okay, a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, there's no further questions or comments. Please cast your votes.
Oh, that's right.
All right, unanimous approval by all those present on the consent agenda.
What else isn't that correct?
Item number four, items removed from consent agenda, there were none. Item number five, we are going to move just to the end of the evening. I'll read it, though. It's the presentation, Guthrie Fire Department, Local 2145, Union 4896, proposed schedule. We will move that to the end of the evening, so we are still going to do it. Item number six, Resolution Number 2025-05, Fiscal Year 2026, Non-Bargaining Employee Pay Plan. Mr. Faulkner.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Just as we do annually, this is the annual pay plan for all non-bargaining employee positions within the City of Guthrie. The few changes which have been made, we have removed the IT specialist position from the pay plan. Given last year, we added the position in because we were going to bring that position in-house. We ended up contracting it out, so we have removed that from the position... Removed that position from the pay plan in front of you. The Associate Librarian position has been reclassified from Range A to Range B. The Assistant Library Director position has been reclassified from Range D to Range E. And a cost of living adjustment has been accounted for in an amount not to exceed 2%. This time, staff recommends approval.
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay, cast your votes.
I'll vote straight.
Unanimous approval for the non-bargaining employee pay plan. Item number seven is Resolution Number 2025-06, ODOT School Zone Speed Limit Changes for US 77 and 33 Highway.
Yes, Mayor, Council. The Oklahoma Department of Transportation has requested the responsible parties to enforce the permanent speed zones and speed limits changed on US 77 and State Highway 33 in Guthrie and the surrounding Logan County to be reduced to 25 mile per hour only during regular school zone... or school days from 7 to 8:30 and from 3 to 4. This was took to our Street Committee back in November 6th, 2023, and passed to our Street Committee. We've been working through this process with ODOT. We'll...we should be seeing new school zone, solar-powered school zone flashing lights at all of our school zones. It's just been a lengthy process, and this is just kind of cleaning up the final paperwork to put it in a resolution for the speed...the speed zones, timing of them.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Maker?
So it's already 25 on 77, and this just clarifies with the school zone sign, right?
Yes, in your packet, you should have a map that shows the two, the one on 33 Highway. There's been slight adjustments to the one on 33 out by the new school on Cotterill. It adjusts that out a little bit further west now that the new school has been adjusted to the west. It basically has pushed that 25 mile per hour further west, adjusting your actual speed coming into that zone as well. The rest of them have stayed the same, the two out, going out 77 by Fogarty and out by the high school.
Anybody else?
I did have a question. A lot of the states are moving to a 15 mile an hour school zone. Does that have all...like you heard anything?
I haven't heard...
Are you just moving to a 15 mile an hour school zone?
I haven't heard anything, any discussion of that. I could definitely look into that down the road.
Turn your mic off.
We can... We can adjust those, but it'll have to be done through a resolution to actually do the speed zone when we get to that point, if we see that that's something that we need to look into.
Doesn't ODOT have to approve all that stuff, too?
Yes, they would have to be done through a resolution if we so desire to adjust to a 15 mile an hour zone. If traffic picks up or pedestrian traffic picks up or something, they'd have to warrant, obviously.
So motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, then here. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Okay, if not, please cast your votes.
I'll vote straight.
All right, unanimous approval for Resolution Number 2025-06 for the school zone speed limit changes. Thank you, Kenny. Item number eight, Ordinance Number 3423, Amendment to Employee Retirement System. Liz, but Liz is here.
Liz is not here this evening, so I will take this. Mayor, Mayor and Council, as is in the staff report in your packet, OMRF inadvertently marked the box to include the Chief of Police in the original CMO Number Two Plan effective January 1, 2024. It's a Scrivener's error that we need to correct. No contributions have been made to a plan that doesn't exist. It's just simply cleaning up the original plan documents, so staff would recommend approval.
I move approval of Ordinance 34...3423, an amendment to the Employee Retirement System Defined Contribution Plan.
Second.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Any further questions for Mr. Faulkner? Anything? Okay, cast your votes.
I'll vote straight.
All right, unanimous approval for Ordinance Number 3423, Amendment to Employee Retirement System.
Your Honor, I move approval of the declaring of an emergency for Ordinance 3423, so that it will take effect immediately.
I'll second that.
Okay, so item number nine, that's what we're doing, yep. Okay, we have a first and a second. Okay, please cast your votes. If no further comments or questions?
I'll vote straight.
All right, unanimous approval for declaring an emergency for Ordinance Number 3423. Item number 10, Appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Yeah, this item's for the...one of two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission. We have an ownership vacancy and a representative from the Planning Commission vacancy. This would be to appoint Carol McPeak to the ownership position for an expirer term through March of 2028.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Further comments or questions, please cast your votes.
I'll vote straight.
Unanimous approval to appoint Carol McPeak to the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you, Dan. Item number 11, the CH...is it Guernsey and Company Contract Termination, Second Fire Station.
Under five minutes.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as is provided in Article Nine of the agreement, city staff is requesting authorization of the city manager to provide any written notice required and take all necessary steps to terminate the contract. So it is a mutual termination. Staff would recommend approval.
Good, there's no move. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? There are none, go ahead and cast your votes, please.
I'll vote straight.
All right, unanimous approval for the CH Guernsey and Company Contract Termination. Wow, okay. Item number...that's pretty quick. Item number 12, City Manager's Report.
Yes, Mayor and Council. We kicked off the school season end of last week, so make sure that you're being mindful of those school zones as we just talked about, kids and the buses. Although we don't intentionally plan to reconstruct intersections at the start of school every school year, it does seem to always work out that way. So the Dr. Simpson was giving me a hard time because the intersection of Oklahoma and Wentz, I think they started demolition the day before school started. That was supposed to have started on July 14th, but due to some supply chain issues with the storm drain, storm sewer that was needed to put in the intersection, we were unable to start at that time. So that construction is moving along well. We do anticipate 60 to 75 days per intersection, so it's a 200-plus day contract. You've got three intersections which are included in those ADA upgrades. So that includes First and Harrison, First and Oklahoma, and Oklahoma and Wentz. So that project is funded by CIP Number Two, and we look forward to seeing it complete. It's one step closer to being ADA compliant in the downtown core. State of the Schools Luncheon will be held next Tuesday at 11:30 at Meridian Tech. If you'd like to attend, please let me know. We'd be happy to RSVP for you. Speaking of the corner of Oklahoma and Wentz, the Pocket Park is nearly complete, so waiting until the end of the summer season to plant the trees, so the end of September, 1st of October, we'll get those trees planted and put a button on that project. It'll really look nice. It's come along quickly, and Crossland did a great job on that, so. The Cottonwood Creek Water Main Crossing, we're ready to put the water line in the casing, so we're scheduling inspections with the railroad and did some pressure testing today. Everything's fused together. Once it's in place, we'll take care of all the testing that is required in terms of back tea, et cetera. So look forward to having that project, that unexpected project behind us. The Airport Taxi Way is currently under construction, so Contech is doing a fantastic job out there. In Week One, they got 1,000-foot of the taxiway demoed and hauled out to Guthrie Lake. So if you've seen any of the concrete riprap, that's where that came from. So that will be used as stabilization behind the Guthrie Lake Dam spillway there. We're hoping to utilize some more from that project, but we're not quite there yet. Westside Booster Pump Station, pump should be here this week. We anticipate installation to begin next week. That's again another CIP Number Two project replacing the oldest booster pump station in city limits, so we're excited to see that take place. Summer swimming program at Pelican Bay has concluded as of last week. We saw approximately 4,000 visitors between Memorial Day and last Friday. Typically, splash pads would be open from Memorial Day to Labor Day. With the peculiar situation we've had this year where Banner Park has not been able to be open due to that Water Main Crossing, we would like to keep mineral wells open as long as we can, as long as the weather permits, maybe run it a little bit past that Labor Day holiday as long as it's not, you know, becoming an issue with freezing temperatures, et cetera, at that point. You never know. I might be wishful thinking, asking for cold weather in September, but that is our goal.
I'll take anything.
Yeah, 104. And with that, Mayor, that's all I have for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Faulkner. Item number 13, request comments from members of City Council. Councilman Williams?
Oh, none, thank you.
Councilman Danny? Or Councilwoman Danny?
I don't have anything.
I almost said Vice Mayor Jeff. Vice Mayor Taylor?
It's no big deal, I wouldn't care to...I'll answer anything. Thank you, staff. Hey, I appreciate the concrete out there. I thought, man, Tenny's gonna have a new playground to play with, so he was...he kept building up. I had people calling, I said, folks, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it. But anyway, thank you, staff, all of you guys, and thank you to Eddie, I appreciate what you do. And thanks to the council as well.
Yeah, Tenny gets lots of toys.
Yeah, he does. He gets lots of toys.
Councilman Aguirre?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, and Councilman Bothrowe?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gibbs?
I don't have anything right now, probably have comments either.
Okay, I don't either, so thank you, Jeff, for that. I wanted to say something. All right, well, then, item number 14, Proposed Executive Session. Can I get a motion for that?
Your Honor, I move an executive session pursuant to authority of Title 25OS, Section 307, 307B2, for the purpose of discussing negotiation concerning the IAFF Local 2145, 307B1, for the purpose of discussing employment issues relating to the municipal judge, Section 307B1, for the purpose of discussing employment issues related to the city attorney, and Section 307B4, for the purpose of discussing confidential communication between the city attorney, and its...and the council regarding a judgment in Logan County Case Number SC 24-3030303.
Second.
Thank you. All right, we have a first and a second. Please cast your votes.
I'll vote straight.
Unanimous approval to have the executive session.
Apprusal?
Proposal.
Apprusal?
Apprusal?
Looking to pursue this and during that time, we've been working very closely with Dane to make sure that it's something feasible for our department to do. And then also, we've been in talk with the city manager just back and forth, just to ensure that as we're taking steps forward, we're not wasting our efforts on something that one of the two of them is not comfortable moving forward with at this time. So what is the 4896 schedule? Pretty aptly named. It's a schedule consisting of 48 hours worked consecutively, followed by 96 hours off. We'll cover what we work right now, but in a minute, but currently what we work right now is a 24-hour schedule, day-on-day-off rotation for a few days. So we're only there for a single day, 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 in the morning the next day. We would just be looking to stack two of those days together and then follow with four days off. So we're just rearranging our calendar. This shift is comprised, or the schedule's comprised of three shifts, red, green, and blue, and it is a repeating and predictable schedule. So if you were to ask me if I work Christmas Day 2032 and I stay on the crew that I'm at, I can flip ahead in the calendar and tell you yes or no right then and there if I work those days. So, oh, I forgot to click to that one for you guys. My apologies. 4896 and the fire service. Nobody's able to pin down when exactly the schedule began, but best is it can be traced back. Early 1990s is when the schedule was developed. It is widespread on the West Coast, some usage in the East Coast, and then pretty heavily used in the state of Texas. It is not a theoretical experiment that we're looking to jump into. This has been a proven schedule by many departments. They have not struggled to maintain this for staffing, service, delivery. So we're not jumping into something that hasn't already been proven by plenty of other departments and people, in addition to those departments being diverse. Large departments like Fort Worth, small departments like Noble, Oklahoma, Kingfisher's looking to move to this, departments that run an ambulance like us, departments that don't run an ambulance like us. So all levels of departments across the country utilize this schedule with success. This is an example of the 4890 schedule. I apologize that I found one that was from 2011 to look at, but this was the cleanest one I could get. That kind of gives you guys an idea of what that schedule would look like. As I said, it's predictable and repeatable. Two days on, if you were to start with our shift, Thursday, the first, followed by four days off, the other crews interlink, and that schedule just repeats. The Kelly schedule, what we currently work right now is a nine-day cycle. We work, try to follow this, a day on, day off, day on, day off, a day on, and then four days off in a row. We typically call that group of five days where we're working on and off a tour. That's a terminology that came back with service members that were deployed at one point, and they started referring to that as their deployment when they were at the fire station for the week, back and forth. That schedule is again comprised of three shifts, red, green, and blue, which work interlocking days with each other. And this is also a repeatable, predictable schedule that we work right now. There is an example, just using the red days to kind of clean it up, so it was easy to see the rotation of just one crew, where they work that day-on-day-off schedule until that fifth day, and then they work, or, excuse me, are off four days after that. Comparison of the 4896 for, I think, what the council and the city would be concerned about, which is ensuring that we can continue to deliver continuity of service without changing anything. The system as it is right now is not broke in the sense of, we're functioning well. So you might ask, like, why would we be looking to change something like that? The good news is, there is no significant difference for administration. While the schedule is different, the results are the same. We serve the community in the exact same manner that we always have. We remain three-shift strength. We're still working an average of 56 hours per week, as we do now. We're still working 2,912 hours averaged per year, and we're still averaging 121 shifts per year. So none of that remain, or all of that remains unchanged. None of that causes any disruption in service to the city. We work the same number of hours, we're just regrouping the days around on the calendar to kind of support some stuff. And we're going to talk about what we're really aiming for that in just a minute. I do want to make a note here, obviously in concerns of like protecting the city, we are looking to change a schedule. If for some reason the city is not happy with the performance of the schedule, and for some reason the union didn't obviously see that ourselves and want to identify or acknowledge that pursuant to our contract, if you guys have ever thumbed through that, under management rights, the city has the option to dictate a schedule. It's in Section 4, 4.01.04, to schedule assigned work, including overtime, makeshift, and crew assignments. So if for any reason we decide to go forward with this trial and things were to not work out and the city did not agree with it, they don't have to come to us to get permission to revert things back to what it was. It can just be reverted back. I don't know why we wouldn't want to acknowledge if something wasn't working out well either, but the city retains that right to pull the system and revert back to what we were doing if by chance they're not in agreeance with it. So the thing that we're looking to combat most is short-term fatigue, and this is something that we're all victims of, every one of you as we sit here now. It is considered temporary fatigue. So the concern for us as firemen is that for a number of years now, our line of duty deaths are not result of us being in burning buildings, collapses, getting hit on the interstate. The biggest loss of life for us right now are related to cardiac incidents and mental health. And more and more sleep deprivation is being attributed to decreases in cardiac health. So we're looking to try to reduce short-term fatigue, which eventually, after six months, is classified then as long-term fatigue. And so we understand that during the busy periods at work, short-term fatigue would be expected to be increased for individuals working our shift. We're not complaining about it. We know that's part of our job. Regardless of we're working the Kelly schedule of 4896, the 2448, there's a couple other schedules, we're going to be fatigued if we're busy at work. That's just the nature of the job. As it stands right now, employees at Guthrie do frequently, within our fire department, work extended shifts, whether they're covering for other people, vacancies, people in class. It's not unusual that people can work 36, 48 hours, or up to 72 with the department right now. So one of the biggest advantages of us moving to this 4896 is that it's going to allow employees better opportunity to recover from sleep deprivation, preventing the long-term deprivation that we talked about, or, excuse me, long-term fatigue. That Kelly schedule, as I mentioned earlier, the problem with that is, we work 24 hours, then we have that one day in between. And when we go home, and I don't, again, don't want this to sound like a complaint, we go home and we have families to keep up with, we're taking care of house projects, we're raising kids, some guys are working other jobs. And so if we've had busy nights, we don't get that chance to go home and truly get rested up before we have to come right back to the station the next day and repeat that cycle again. And that is our choice. We've asked to do that. We just believe, again, as we found another schedule that allows us to accomplish the same mission with a little bit better outcome for us possibly for our health long-term. So the big plus side to this is that we're going to increase the number of those four-day rest cycles we have by 50%. We naturally, right now, within the Kelly schedule, have 40 of those four-day breaks built in. Regrouping the days around and taking out those days in between and pushing the days together would allow us to increase that to 60 of those a year. And that, by simply completing that, allows us to have more mornings where we're waking up at home, not having to drive into work, allowing us to get up just a little bit later, sleep in, recover a little bit better at work, not have that toner waking us up every morning. And as it says there, we go from nine of those to 15 of those per month, simply by just rearranging the days. The other benefit that wasn't initially projected or seen as going to be like a benefit, but was found by departments that had moved to this, was a decrease in the use of sick leave. Because of the way that the days are clustered together, departments saw that they had a decrease in the number of sick usage. With our current schedule, if a guy becomes sick on the first day, let's say something like the flu, usually by the third day of our shift, so the fifth day into some sickness, they may be feeling better, but we have to take into consideration that it's not sitting behind a desk for the day. You're going to be asked to be incredibly physically active, and sometimes we have to have conversations with guys about like, look, if you're not 100%, you become a liability to us, maybe you should stay home. So with that, we see that if departments found that if somebody is sick the first day and they take the second day, they have a total of six days to recover and are typically back at work faster and less sick day usage. And some of the examples I found for that, three of these will be West Coast departments. They have just a lot of data that's available. Minneapolis is of the Minneapolis, Minnesota. All of them saw what I would consider, with the exception of Half Moon Bay, a pretty significant decrease in their usage of sick time. Minneapolis actually did like a side-by-side for the year. They switched some of their services to 4896 while remaining some of the department on the regular schedule, just to do a live side-by-side. But everybody saw what was kind of an unintended benefit of doing that. So truly, our motivation and why we started looking at this, we're looking at a means of attracting and maintaining more employees. As we're seeing more and more on social media, when departments post flyers for come work for us, they're including their schedule, and the big schedule we see on these flyers now is the 4896. We see a lot of those out of Texas. We're starting to see more of them in Oklahoma, Kansas. Those are the ones that we're seeing around here. Additionally, we're hoping to reduce the long-term and short-term fatigue that I touched on, and lastly, improve departmental efficiency. We are efficient right now. I don't mean to imply that we're not an efficient group, but we think we can take that to another level by reducing the amount of shift changes that we have with other crews, and we're going to talk about that here in a second. So some of the benefits the department saw, improved morale is a comment that's heard over and over from people we talk to. Employees are well-rested after a four-day. If we increase those by 50%, we have better-rested employees 50% more of the time. Employees felt more productive and better organized on and off duty, and there were fewer transitions between shifts, which made for less duplication, better communication, and more operational continuity. If you guys can imagine handing over a business, a seven-figure business, every morning at 24 hours to a new group of people that weren't there the previous day and try to explain to them 24 hours' worth of work that was completed. As hard as we try, some details get missed somewhere, or things can't be communicated appropriately unless you were just there to see the work getting done. Projects are handed off, like trucks that are being worked on, things that were assembled or disassembled, and we're leaving those projects for another crew to try to complete the following day, hoping that they got the same semblance of what it was supposed to be when we started working on the project. So as I said, we're looking for increased productivity and project follow-through. Employees found that the schedule allowed for more flexibility in scheduling daily work over the two days. One of the things our department does struggle with is continuity of training. We will start training, and the joke at our department is, if we're slow and we'd like a call, let's go out and start training. Because it's inevitable, we get a fire truck hooked to a hydrant, we get all this hose dragged out, everybody dressed up in their stuff. We haven't done a call in hours, and we start just getting hammered with runs. And by the time we get back, it's either too late in the day to continue that training or when we go to restart it 48 hours later, because we're going home the next day and then we got to come back, we've kind of lost the momentum, and we have to restart our training again from back inside the classroom, recover stuff again, and we're kind of just recovering the same ground over and over to try to get that continuity of our training back. Members with program responsibilities can leave paperwork on their desk to work for two days in a row. We have a chief that does EMS item ordering. I imagine he'd be able to get a lot more accomplished in that if he was able to just stick with it for two days, as opposed to phone calls getting missed when he's gone the next shift day and then us having to tell people, try to call back, catch him on the next shift day. And then follow-up meetings and phone calls are easier to follow up with the second day. There's a lot of days, folks will call up to the station, like to schedule something. If we have the availability that day, we of course take care of them. If it's something like inspections or whatnot that we can't get to that day that we can schedule, we usually hand that off to the next shift. That includes us now trying to have to relay contact information, times, availabilities, locations, special requests that they had. Hopefully, all that gets communicated appropriately, but we're humans, things get missed. The hope is, we handle those projects the second day and don't leave anybody else with the material to handle for the following shift. So in conclusion, the response for us has been overwhelmingly positive at our, at our union for this change. We support any kind of progressive change that the department could achieve, and Chief Lawson has been supportive in us investigating this possibility for a new schedule that we're looking at. Oh, I went one too far, sorry. We view this as a simple solution right now. We're very fortunate. When I talk about needing retention, we need retention. With the hiring of our next two guys that are coming on board here in the, this next week or two, I believe it stands that 18 members of the department will have less than five years of experience. And that's not accounting for another two to three that look to be leaving in the next couple of years, which will probably be well over 100 years' worth of experience that walks out the door in that time. So it's not something that we can exponentially grab hold of. So I need as many of those guys that are at that five-year bubble to stay with us and not look at another department because maybe a schedule that they would prefer that they're interested in. So, and as I said, we've got a lot of young guys. These guys are motivated right now, they're excited about this possibility of the schedule change. If there's going to be success in it, these guys are going to help make that, that possible for us. Any questions from anybody?
I like the idea that it helps with the longevity with sleep and connected up to heart issues. That's, that sounds good. And as long, as long as this is not causing any issues with your guys' readiness and quality, I think it sounds great. What do you guys think?
I assume that Dane and Eddie are on board on this as well, right?
It's a fluid process. Eddie, I'll let you speak to that, sir.
Absolutely, you're fine. Yes, we, we are supportive. Something I wanted to touch on, on behalf of the fire department, this is coming from the members. So our employees, the union, they came in, Chief Lawson said, hey, we want to try this. He came to me, I said, willing to try it, but we also have to all go into it knowing that if it doesn't work, we've got to revert back because our number-one priority is safety of citizens. They've, they've been great in agreeing to that, and I think it's, it's something that we could do easily to get a very large positive outcome. So we're happy to at least try and, and see what happens.
How many have actually reverted back?
It's difficult to get a statistic on that, but there's a, there's a big website. I mean, you guys could, of course, go on and look for it, 4896.com, and it has tons of departments that have switched to it. It has their, their plans that they put together. If you're looking for information to draw from or more, there is far more information I could give you guys about this that would really put us in the weeds and make this a much longer presentation of all of the benefits of it. But we don't see, unless there is, as the city manager was saying, some change in the way that the service is performed. It seems to be rather kind of a laissez-faire, like if it works and there's no problem, then nobody has any issue with the change. And as I said, we're, we're changing the type of tire we have on the car, but we intend for it to still hold air and move the car same place. So.
So do they need a motion?
They do not need a motion at this time. It will require an MOU to be executed by the council and by the union, and will outline that, hey, this is going to be a 12-month trial run, effective January 1, 2026. If there is an issue, we all, we all agree that we will go back on it, switch back to our other schedule, but we don't foresee that happening, obviously. We want to give them a year to try it and make sure that, you know, we want to make sure we give it the due diligence that's required in trying to execute it before changing back or reverting back, so.
And like in everything else, if we had 1,000 acres go up, everybody's coming to work anyway, right?
Yes, sir, yeah. It doesn't change the availability or the readiness of guys off-duty or anything like that. Yes, sir, that, all that remains the same. And I, I didn't get this put in here, I did want to touch on, moving forward, if the council did not have any issue against us moving forward, we're going to start really pouring a lot of man-hours into this in regards to finalizing all the SOGs, finding the contractual changes that we need to make. And while we don't have, I was going to have Dane speak with the city manager about a timeline for this, but we're looking at no later than October 1st to have all this in the city manager's hands. So if you all need to see that and approve any changes, that can be done. We have then through January 1st to make any last-minute changes if we feel like anything is necessary where we miss something. And then obviously, as we go through the trial basis, it's been understood by both parties, it will be a very fluid thing. The contract, probably not so much, those should be, I think, relatively identifiable and easy changes to make. But the SOGs can be very fluid moment-to-moment if we decide, we don't like how the schedule's put together, the chief agrees, we can change it to something else. We should be able to, to accomplish all of that with very few speed bumps along the way. And as I said, monitored by both sides of the table to ensure that we're doing things the exact same way that we are. If we notice there's problems, I think both sides would be quick in agreeance to switch back to something that was already working. As I said, we understand it's not broke, why are we looking to fix it? But we do, we do feel like there's some benefits to the employees.
Good job.
So.
Thank you.
I have one comment and then a question for you. First of all, I've spent my entire life earning a living by speaking, and most people who try to do public speaking do it enormously poorly, and probably including myself, even though I've done it since I was 22. Great presentation like that was, it was like incredible. You didn't have any ums, there were not a whole lot of, I think it was just like, very polished. I was, I'm very impressed with your presentation skills, and I appreciate that. So a number of years ago, because I'm a state employee and I get a state pension from teacher's retirement, I went to a presentation on teacher's retirement. And at that time, we were not actuarially sound, there's, there's a point to this. And one of the reasons that we weren't actuarially sound was because teachers live a long time. Like, we have a fairly stress-free life, you know, it's particularly college professors, pretty, pretty easy. And, you know, and I shouldn't say this, you know, in an open meeting where they're, they're going to come after me and fire, you know, look to fire me because I said, well, we just have this real easy life and we live a long time. The only pension plan at the time that I went to this meeting that was actuarially sound in the state of Oklahoma was the firefighters' pension plan. Want to know why that was?
Why?
You die early.
Oh, yes.
I mean, like, you, you, you die. And if you die early, you don't draw, like, teachers, I'll retire at 55, and, you know, I could draw it out for 100 years, right? Or not 100 years, but 50 years, because we live a long time. And at that time, they hypothesized that one of the reasons that the pension plan, they did all these studies as to why it was that firefighters, I remember reading this, pass away early is because they said that it was the stress of going, particularly in the middle of the night, if you get a call, being woken up and going from zero to 60 in three seconds, right? And that's, that's one of the things that they hypothesized. This doesn't address that problem. I mean, and so is there, is there more research that's been done that suggests that that's not, I mean, that was the major cause when they did this presentation?
Yes.
And I started looking at the research.
Well, and there are, there are facets that have been addressed within the fire service for trying to do that. We used to have it at the front of the station. I believe it's been disconnected now for some time. We used to have one of the original, I believe, bells from the, the old fire station that was part of our doorbell, and it was very alarming and very jarring. The biggest thing that they've done to try to fix that problem was to change the way that the tones come across. It's not supposed to be like a sharp, just jarring noise, although some people have to have the volume turned up all the way in their room on the speaker to, to wake up to that stuff. Whatever they're doing it, that's fine. But it, there's not a way that like, you know, I wish some nice figure could come into my room and gently like wake my shoulder and be like, hey, hey, you've got to go to work, you've got to go to work. So they have taken some steps to reduce that, but I, I will say, maybe it comes with time. I know we have a captain on my crew that still talks about that every time that goes off, he feels like sometimes his heart is racing. I'd have to check my watch in the evening, but if, if I go from maybe 40 beats a minute while I'm sleeping up to maybe 80, 90, I could tell you I don't notice it anymore. I don't jump out of bed just heart pounding anymore. It's like I wake up and it's just like an alarm going off for me to wake up anyways. I'm a little groggy, I get out of bed, I'm listening to the material, and I'm out the door. So will it be potentially a factor later on in my life? Possibly. Will it be something that they'll be able to pinpoint directly? I don't know. But you are correct. I mean, cancer, mental health, cardiac issues, all of those plague us in our job for like early deaths of guys after they retire. So the only way that we can change that is for the wake-up is, as I said, hire somebody that would very gently come wake me up in the evening for each call. Or look at some sort of toner system that like has an even more gentle way to wake us, and some departments have those. It's, you're kind of, if Dane can correct me, Chief Lawson can correct me, you're kind of stuck with whatever system you have to alert you. It only comes with so many options to wake you, so many different sounds it can do. Some departments have purchased ones, the sound builds very slowly to a louder noise. Some departments like ours, it's just kind of a sharp tone that comes across at the same volume from start to finish. But I can change that volume in my room, if I want to.
So I guess, I guess what I'm saying is this, is there a contrast in the research between that original hypothesis and subsequent research that suggests that the shift schedule change actually has a positive impact?
Okay, sorry, I see what you're saying. Yeah, so really, we're, yeah, we're looking at, while we can't augment the tone, we're looking to try to decrease another factor for us that, that causes like, is that what you, is that what you're asking? Yes.
I mean, when, when we look at that kind of research, what we look at is the impact of the factor and try to isolate the factor to determine the amount of causation that the factor has on the dependent variable.
Yeah, I don't, unfortunately, I don't believe that there's any research that I saw, and I, I looked for a couple of hours regarding the, the numbers for the things that are killing, or that are being blamed for on-the-job deaths currently. It's not broken up that specifically in categories. They just list like cardiac building collapses, vehicular accidents, things like that as the cause of death. I couldn't find any literature or studies that broke down anything further, other than they can just say that the more studies that are being done, the more they correlate increased fatigue, sleep deprivation to cardiac, like poor cardiac health, and then that ties into that. But I, I've never seen anything, we know that, we know that the loud noises and getting jarred awake is not good for us. We know that that heart rate going from 40 to 110 or 120 three or four times a night is not great. The only way that they're able to solve that is just to find a gentler system to try to wake you, but it has to work for everybody. And to say that we kind of have to play to the, to the lowest person, if we have a guy that's hard to wake up, like, then we need a system, you know, that wakes people up when they're tired, not a system that, you know, wakes people up. Like, I know what I asked for with this job, so I can't complain about that if later on in life I'm suffering from some of these things, but we're going to look to try to help some of the ones that we can, where we can.
Lieutenant Rupert, one of the things I think Chief Lawson had mentioned previously is the number of sleeps at home helps decrease some of that fatigue.
Yes.
And subsequently, that helps extend your life. Is that what you found in your research?
Yes, yes, that is, that, they're, they're saying those more nights at home, more nights waking up in your own bed, that is contributing to decrease in that long-term fatigue, that, that greater than six months of sleep deprivation and that short-term fatigue stacking up. As I said, anything over six months of short-term fatigue is now considered long-term fatigue. And that's what this schedule is looking to combat. We're not going to be able to reduce the short term. I mean, that's going to happen every night. If I'm busy at work, I'm going to be busy at work. We're looking for those days off to help recover and kind of combat that issue. So.
All right, can I add one thing? Kind of to your question, as far as stress that it's putting on the heart as being one of the cause of deaths, as far as, you know, teachers versus firefighters, I know that when we come in right now on shift, there is many nights where we don't sleep. So 24 hours, then you go home, then you're up another 12, 14, so you're looking at 36, 38. Well, if you come in first shift at 100% and you don't sleep at all, or you may have one or two calls in the night, even three or four, which is very usual, you leave the next morning, let's say at 25% of what you came in with, well, then you go all day, yes, you go home, you sleep eight hours, well, you come in for that next shift, you're only at 65, 70%. And so you're already placing more stress on your heart, your body, respiratory system, like when you're sleeping, because they attribute a lot of issues with respiratory, would be sleep apnea, anything like that, with the job that we do. So we are bringing in it to, like I said, more sleeps at home to be able to, once we come off, if we're at 10- we come off, if we're at ten, fifteen percent, we have actually four days instead of one day in between to try to recharge the battery to as much as we could get it, whether it be fifty or sixty percent, and that does in turn cause a lot less stress on cardiac system and everything as far as coming in the next day. And so when we come on for our next tour, then we're fully back to where we needed to be, which helps. So I think that was, I was kind of hoping.
I do have, just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
And and don't get me wrong, I am all for, I mean, the department, obviously, if you guys want to trial it, I'm I'm all for that. But I also, there's a variable, a huge variable in this for those days off, for those four days off, that that is kind of uncontrollable, because I know a lot of firefighters have second jobs, you know, mow lawns, spray lawns, whatever the case may be. So if the goal is to have more of those days off to rest and sleep, and which, like I said, it's a variable that nobody can control other than the individual, but if you're, you know, there has to be, with the studies that were out there, you know, what did, did they monitor what these guys did on their days off? I mean, if you're up all night, you know, doing whatever, or mowing fifteen yards a day and doing what, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yes, ma'am, yeah.
It's a very uncontrolled study, you know, at times, because you can't, we can't control what you guys do on your days off. But again, with that being said, it makes total sense, being at home, just being able to, you know, sit and watch TV without all the guys and the commotion of the station and all that, so I totally get that. But again, I just kind of, just thinking on my own, just, you know, it's an uncontrolled situation for what guys do on their days off, whether they have twenty-four hours or seventy-two, I mean, you're not, you know, hopefully they rest and get that extra sleep, but I'm all for trialing this.
And I understand what you're saying, yeah. By no means did they hook up thousands of firefighters across the country to sleep machines on their four days off and like truthfully track what they did and didn't do through the day. And I understand, we're looking at it based on, yeah, based on if guys are saying, I felt better, my, to say like, I want to say the morality of our department is already good, we're looking to take it to a better place, so that if guys come in and say, by morale, by personal feeling, I feel better, I mean, if that meant that you did what you did on your four days but somehow still felt better coming back into work, I I take that as a win. But you're right, I I can't, I can't hook him up to a machine like Drew was saying and be like, well, today your battery shows you're twenty percent more charged than you were when we were on this old schedule. I can't do that. Some of it is subjective in the way that we're interpreting it, not objective. And I wish I had statistics or an ability to show that to you guys, and that's why I say we, we're going to be very open and honest. If this system does not work or function well for us, then we're not trying to impede the services we provide to the city. I mean, we feel like we do a great job, and we want to just continue with that, just with a system that maybe reduces a little bit of fatigue on us someplace, so.
Yes, agreed.
I think one important note I'd like to add, the fatigue and, you know, just what it does to your body, I think most importantly too, though, is these guys are, with this schedule, like Drew had shown you guys, they have more time at home, and what that can do to these guys and women mentally is significant also. I mean, mental, in the fire service, it's crucial, and I think spending more time at home with their families and waking up more times, especially if you've got a newborn, you're going to be able to see that newborn more often in the mornings, refreshed. So I think the mental side of it is a positive too. And then I spoke to someone at Stillwater, he's a lieutenant on their shift, and they went to the forty-eight ninety-six about ten years ago, I believe. Their union had a lot of pushback on it, certain guys were pushing it to do the forty-eight ninety-six, but when they voted to do a trial run, I think like sixty-two percent, he said, voted to pass this through to try their trial run. Well, after that year, they went back to revote, and over ninety percent passed to keep that schedule. So I think mentally, mentally, this is significant too for not only their, you know, their bodies wearing down and stuff too, so I just wanted that.
I think you've done a good enough presentation that, and we're on board, I'm on board, I've heard multiple people say they're on board. For me, you have the, you know, my nod is continue on, and and who are, you know, at the end of the day, we have to rely on Dane and our city manager, with, they've got the thumbs up on it, so my position is you're good to go, but you got another, you got six other people here.
Well, but we're waiting till January, or when we get out.
I'm talking about so that he can start working more on the process. That's why I said the nod, not the vote.
Sure. I don't know that we need a motion, but I think we need to understand, and I'm not hearing anything negative, I mean, if there's a negative thought from the council, I think now would be the time to voice that.
Yeah, we don't want them to waste this time.
No, definitely not. I can definitely see the benefits from also have children at home, so being able to have two days stacked in a row and being able to spend time with your family, even if they're in events, or, you know, you're you're coming off of no sleep and then you're expected to stay awake a bit longer, and that bit longer keeps going, and then you're expected to come back to work. So I only see a benefit in looking at the trial period, and I have no doubt that all the i's will be dotted, the k's will be crossed to get there, so my favorite.
Awesome. One last thing I did want to add for you guys, just so you guys kind of know the, what the move would be in twenty-twenty-six. If we move through the trial with it and things are going well, and everybody agrees that it's a good system and we're we're happy with it, so that we're not trying to jostle a bunch of stuff around with the contract again at another point where the contract starts at one time, but we're doing yearly calendars in January for vacations and things like that. I believe by the time we get around to contract negotiations and in stating a new one, the union and the city will probably know if this system is going to work out for us. We'll have been seven, eight-plus months in it at that point, and if we've identified problems, we should know them. At that point, we'll probably go ahead, I think the plan was as a union, to sometime prior to contract negotiations ending, for us to go ahead and vote on our side if we wish to keep the schedule. That way, if it is the wish of the chief and the city manager to go ahead and approve that, that would come back to you all so that we don't have to continue to do multiple MOUs and almost like these two mirrored contracts to reflect two different schedules, we're trying to kind of keep in balance in case we need to revert back. So that would be our plan in twenty-twenty-six, to hand that over to you guys if everything goes well.
Sounds like a plan.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, thank you guys for your time and your consideration.
Thanks.
Great presentation.
Okay, all right, so we are back on schedule now.
Turning that.
Yep, okay. All right, so item number twenty, we are adjourned, and then we will, I will call it a order, our Guthrie Public Works Regular Authority Meeting, again, Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven forty-three PM. Item number two is the consent agenda, items A through F.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion to second. Further comments or questions, please cast your votes.
All votes, right?
Okay, that is a yes vote from me, so that is a unanimous approval. The button's right here. Item number three are items from the consent agenda.
None.
None, there were none removed. So item number four, we are adjourned.